I call to order the Board of Trustees meeting for Monroe County Public Library for December 10th, 2025. I'd like to hand it over to Greer for, nope, let's do a consent agenda first. Motion to approve the agenda for minutes from the November 19th board meeting, the executive session, the monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personnel report, and board meeting calendar.
I second.
All in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Aye, motion approved. And now to hand it to Greer for the Director's Monthly Report.
Okay, thank you. So, one of our biggest stories for 2025 has been the strong circulation statistics we've seen, particularly in digital circulation. For the second month in a row, overall circulation was stronger last month than any previous November, going back to 2020. As we prepare to adopt a new collection analytics tool, and in thinking about some of the patron use and seasonal patterns you all asked about last month, we'll be looking closer at these circulation stats in 2026 to better understand correlation, causation, and some platform-specific trends that are driving our digital circulation increases. But with that said, the bottom line is that our patrons are making greater and greater use of our digital collections, and that our suite of digital content platforms is meeting the needs of more and more patrons. So that's just a great thing. Outreach librarian Libby and Outreach Associate Dan participated in the Second Annual Highland Park Elementary School Community Fair. They brought the Outreach van as part of their presentation, and students got to explore the vehicle and its heavy-duty lift. Next year, we're hoping to have Outreach return to Highland Park for the Third Annual Event, and this time, of course, with a brand-new bookmobile. We held our annual volunteer celebration last month. We hold this event every year to thank our many volunteers for the remarkable work they do in supporting our library. We're proud and fortunate to have had 344 unique volunteers in 2025 who've helped with all kinds of projects, including seed library packaging, Friends bookstore sales, and stockroom work, our Friends by-annual book sales, library program support, and community service projects. Mario Kart is not surprisingly one of our most popular multiplayer games at the library, but it and other popular video game programs often center around teen services. In November, our downtown children's department hosted a lively and well-attended Mario Kart tournament, and the winners, who, by the way, were decided by a photo finish, received 3D-printed trophies. As we've shared previously, our partnership with Heading Home of South Central Indiana involves a diversion and prevention case manager being stationed onsite here at the downtown library. Our case manager, Shaquae Norris, has been working onsite and is starting to connect MCPL patrons who are at risk of losing their housing with local agencies to help them develop a plan to avoid becoming homeless. This position is funded by a generous grant from the Lilly Foundation to the Monroe County Community Foundation and Heading Home of South Central Indiana. A $7 million grant is aimed at reducing instances of homelessness in Monroe County over the next five years. We'll have a full update on this partnership and on the work that Shaquae is doing in probably quarter two of 2026. And back in 2023, MCPL developed its own policy and procedures for mitigating pest infestations. Over these past three years, we've refined and expanded the procedures to identify and eradicate bedbugs in particular, which are sometimes found in returned library books as well as materials on our shelves. Now with three years of practice and success under their belts, our Circulation Services Department gave a presentation at this year's ILF conference on how MCPL manages this challenge that all public libraries now face. This is the first time that our Circulation Services Department has presented at a professional conference, and we are very proud to celebrate their great work and well-earned accolades, and happy to answer any questions about the Director's Report.
I do have a quick question about the look at digital resources and platforms moving forward. You had mentioned looking at the usage statistics for the platforms and adding new. What is the possibility of looking at account level to see, you know, who's maximizing accounts, how we're not, and looking at rather, and I'm not sure how our subscription services work, if we're paying per individual account or if we're paying for, like, volume usage, but if we could use that as a negotiating point?
So, it depends on the platform, it depends on the vendor. So Lisa Chappelli of Collection Development and I are going back and forth on this to see which platforms we can actually drill down to, say, weekly, daily use trends. Can we see user-specific use trends, or is it just sort of MCPL as a package on a given day, whatever it is? And it really does depend on the platform. But what I know now is that we'll be able to get more granular analytics on digital collection use, in part with the aid of some of our new tools, but really just a more concerted effort on our part to take a look at digital collection use and what the trends are. I don't know if we're going to be able to do that across the board with digital collections, and there are apples, oranges, and pears, because some of them are databases for research, some of them are streaming platforms, downloadable platforms, they're all kind of different. But we want to get a better sense for what digital collection use is about in terms of meeting patron needs, rather than saying, as a whole, these 90 to 100 digital collections we have are doing extremely well. It's great, but it's not detailed enough. So, we don't know how detailed we can get yet, but we're working on it.
Okay. And if we can't internally, we could reach out?
We generally reach out to the vendor with those questions anyway. Sometimes we're met with, that's not what our license allows us to do, but we'll see.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
In the report, under Goal Two, whoops, Website Updates, the first bullet point. And I, sorry if I should know this, but I don't know how to pronounce it. A-T-O-Z, Food America?
Oh, A to Z Food America and A to Z World Food. Sorry, the space would have helped, yeah.
Well, it's throughout the whole thing, so it's like an organization. So, those were some pretty amazing statistics, and I don't know really what that is. Are you able to explain that?
I don't know a lot about A to Z food or world food either, so I'd have to pass that on to Lisa and also to Tori in our C and M Department.
Yeah, and I can probably get on the website and read about it, too, or something, but I thought the statistics were pretty amazing. I didn't know if it was something to help the community know resources for getting food?
I think it's something like that, but what's interesting about this, and we see this pretty much every month with the website updates, is that when we do a featured e-library resource for a given month, and we do one every month, we expect to see some kind of increase in use as a result. So that's sort of the causation. Sometimes we see enormous increases in use, which is the case this time and some other times this year. So, it's just an indication that it's worth our while to continue the e-library of the month kind of focus, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else before we move on? Okay, we don't have any old business today. Got a lot of new business to work through. So, can I get a motion to hear about the El Centro contract for 2026 from Gary?
So moved.
I second.
Great.
This is the annual renewal of the agreement with El Centro to rent space in the building, and the only thing that's changed is the dates. And thanks, Jamie, for getting that right for us. But are there any questions about that agreement?
Well, I don't know what that is. When I looked at this, I looked at introductory material, and I couldn't quite figure out what El Centro is. Do you mind explaining that, anyone?
Happy to. They are on the first floor, and it is basically, they are providing services to the Latino population here in Monroe County. So it's just a place for them to go, and I don't know a lot of details about their services, but, oh, yes.
So it's a resource for the Latino community here in Monroe County, and they're able to connect people with other resources in the community, or if there's a need where we're seeing a large need in anything, they kind of are able to connect people to whatever resource they may need. I only, I know of this because I used to use it a lot to promote the speech therapy services that I was providing, but they're a wonderful resource for our Latino community here in Monroe County. So, I hope that sheds a bit of light.
I want to just make sure that I was getting that right.
Greatest person to describe them, I just know, I've used their services before.
An outside group technically using library space, it's, okay, collaborative.
They sort of lease a space from us. It was in a different location some years back, and now it's in one of the offices at the back of the Indiana Room. So they have their own dedicated space where they can meet with clients and families and things like that.
I will share that having it at the library is phenomenal, because for families that are new to our community, getting them here to El Centro and then getting them here and introducing them to our library is just phenomenal, so, just I'll add that little bit. And I don't volunteer there, I just have used their resources before.
So we want to keep that partnership, that's basically what this is, yeah.
It's a win-win situation.
Yep.
All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Gary, thank you for continuing to stand there. Can I get a motion to hear Gary speak about the resolution for surplus items?
I will, so moved.
So this was triggered by a request from our IT Department. We had an employee who wanted to purchase their laptop was going to be declared surplus, or because it was a 2021 laptop, and this employee wanted to purchase it, and so he, it was done through the bookstore, and, but we needed this resolution to declare it surplus.
Any questions before we vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Can I get a motion to approve the policy update to the fee schedule? Thank you, Josh.
Hi, folks. We do this every year. We review our fee schedule. We made a handful of changes last year, some updates that we thought we needed, and there are none this year. If you look on page 57, you will see that the plaque card non-resident fee of $70 is highlighted in red. That's just because the state library had not set that rate at the time the board packets were sent out, and it mercifully was kept at $70. So, if you have any questions about any of these individual items, I'd be happy to discuss them.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to hear Greer talk about the board bylaw update?
Oh, let's, sorry, we'll do the art exhibit first, if we could.
I'm sorry.
Policy update, yeah.
Oh, thank you, the policy update.
And this one's pretty easy. So, one of our policies manages the way we handle art exhibits and displays, such as we have right outside of this room. This is just a housekeeping piece, because now that we have a second branch location, we need to include that in this policy, and it currently just talks about downtown and Ellisville. What we would do is, at the bottom of the second page of the policy, which is page 59 in the packet, says Ellisville Branch, and then the language there just says where it is. At Southwest, the exhibit space is also right outside the meeting room or meeting room lobby. So we would simply use the exact same language that we have for Ellisville and build a paragraph specific to Southwest, and that's it. We would consider the policy updated, so, that's all it is.
All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. All right, Greer, now, the motion to hear board bylaw update.
So moved.
Oh, sorry, I second.
Okay. So our board bylaws outlining what we do as a board, how we're structured, how it relates to the Indiana Code specific to public libraries, which I think was passed in 1945, and how our meetings are structured. And we are required by the state library to review and update this every three years, whether we make changes to it or not. The last time we updated it or made any changes was actually 2019. We did an accuracy check on the bylaws back in April of this year, but we're bringing it to you all for discussion, to see if there's anything you want to change. We do not have to vote on changes to the bylaws tonight. We can talk about them, bring them back again in January and make a vote. The one thing that I know has been asked, and I think Amy asked this in a relatively recent meeting, is have we ever thought about moving public comment from the end of our meeting to the top? A lot of other public boards do that, because it's more intuitive for the public to get to speak at the top of a meeting rather than after all the votes are done. And so that's something for you all to consider. If we did, we would, of course, keep the same policy for public comment in place that we currently have, which is that individuals are limited to three to five minutes to speak, and the board does not engage or respond to any comments. So there would be no changes to the nature of public comment, but it might be worth considering moving public comment to the beginning of our meetings. And other than that, most of what's in the bylaws is how we have officers, when and how they're elected, how we manage committees, how often we meet, who's present, and so on, stuff that generally doesn't change all that often.
Does anybody know what our local school board does? Like, I'm just trying to use that as an example here in the community.
I think they have comment at the top of the meeting and not at the end.
And they do have the same policy where they don't comment.
Yeah.
They just listen.
Got it.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so, first question that I would like to ask you is, would you like to vote tonight, or do you want to wait and revisit this in January? With the change being that we would move the meetings to the top, or the public comment to the top of the meeting?
I would prefer to wait until January, but I'm open to what my, I apologize.
If Amy's here, since she suggested that, maybe, we don't want to vote it all down without her, I mean, not that I would, but just so we can hear her opinion, might make sense.
Yeah, exactly.
Good idea.
The person that, it would be, it would be nice and respectful if the person that suggested it was here when we voted, so.
Absolutely. So, we will move that to a January action item.
Good thinking.
Thank you, that's good.
It's okay, Nancy, it's all good. All right. Motion to hear the resolution to approve the 2026 holiday closing schedule.
So moved.
And second.
All right. Like, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
So this can be found, sorry, on page 64 and 65 of the packet. It's just our holiday closing schedule. We update this every year. There are no changes to the observed holidays. It's just been updated for the calendar dates, so. Any questions? Do you want me to read the whole resolution, or do I just pass it around?
I think you could. Tom, do we need to read the resolution aloud for this, or can we pass it around?
It's okay in writing, right?
Okay.
We're good?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, okay.
If you guys need to vote before you sign?
Let's do a quick vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, can I get a motion to hear the resolution to approve the 2026 pay date schedule, wage schedule, and annual wage increases?
So moved.
I second.
So this is found on page 66, 67, and 68 of the packet. The pay date schedule is just updated for our 2026 paydays. The way that our payroll works is we pay out every two weeks, so the pay period runs Monday through the following Sunday, and then we pay out on the, on two Fridays after that. The only thing to note that is not a Friday payday is December 23rd, that's a Wednesday, because the 25th is a holiday, and we didn't want folks to have their paycheck delayed. So that's the only payday that's not a Friday. And then the wage and salary schedule, we worked with NFP back in 2023, well, 2022, for our 2023 wage and salary schedule. Part of the work that they did with us was to help us with the adjustments to our wage and salary schedules. We were on track to do that for 2026, but with SB 1 and the impacts that that had, we did decide to pause that, and so we didn't do a full review of the compensation study or the compensation schedule. We have committed to do that for 2026, so we'll do that work in 2020, I'm sorry, we'll do that work in 2026 for 2027 wages. The only change that we have on this right now is that we're moving the maximum out so that our folks continue to get those annual pay increases and don't go above the maximum. So that's the only change that's been made on this, and then we are committing to adjust the entire schedule for 2027. And then the other piece in this is the compensation increase. So this is similar to what we've done in years past. It would be 75 cents or 2.75% incremental increase, whichever is higher, and it's subject to those wage and salary schedule maximums. And the wage increase would be effective for the first payday in '26, which falls on January 9th of 2026, and includes the pay periods beginning December 15th, 2025, ending December 28th, 2025. And it would be for anyone who works at the library as of December 15th, which is that first day of the pay period. And I have the resolution to pass around, but do you have any questions on any of that?
I have a really quick question.
Yeah.
And I, have we ever discussed non-exempt and exempt being paid in different times, like versus a bi-weekly, or has that ever been discussed?
I think it's something that we talked about with NFP, but I think we decided to keep it the same. I know there had been some questions about maybe increasing the frequency of compensation for hourly folks to be like a weekly versus bi-weekly, but I don't know that we've ever discussed it beyond just sort of the anecdotal.
Okay.
Are you aware of anything that we've talked about, Greer?
And that sounds right, yeah.
So maybe with the next?
That's certainly something we can bring up with NFP next year when we do this.
Yeah, with the next discussions, just to see.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of passing the resolution to, for the 2026 pay date schedule, wage schedule, and annual wage increases, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion to hear the resolution to renew PERF. Becky, thank you.
So this is found on pages 69 through 73 of your packet. This is just the annual agreement with PERF, so that's Public Employee Retirement Fund. It is run by, in PERS is the organization that does that. Every year, they adjust the normal and supplemental rates. So, the way this is set up is there is an employer contribution to the retirement fund and an employee contribution. The library pays both the employer and the employee. So the employee contribution is 3% each payroll, and the employer is 11.2. So it's a total of 14.2% that the library is contributing into our full-time folks' PERF accounts. The normal and supplemental rates change every year. There's a published schedule that those change on, and so for 2026, the normal rate is 4.4%, and the supplemental rate is 6.8%. Last year, the normal rate was 4.2%, and the supplemental was 7%. So, just a little change there, and we have to sign this document to continue and renew our PERF retirement account for folks. Any questions?
No? All in favor of approving the resolution to renew PERF, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Motion to hear the resolution to set the library director's salary.
So moved.
A second.
I'm going to read from the Board of Trustees of Monroe County Public Library, having conducted appropriate evaluation and considerations, hereby adopts the following resolution concerning the annual salary for the library director, Greer Carson. For the calendar year 2026, the annual salary for the library director, Greer Carson, shall be $118,617, together with all appropriate benefits consistent with the position. Any questions? All in favor of approving the resolution to set the library director's salary, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Can I get a motion for the approval of the 2026 board calendar?
So moved. A second.
Okay. It is in the packet, so, any questions or comments before we take vote?
I'll point out that there is one alternative meeting space to this space. That's in April. We're going to meet in the auditorium. That's when we have our spring book sale, and it takes up this entire space. So we'll happily return to the auditorium for that one. Otherwise, we have one meeting at Ellisville in June, and then one in Southwest in September, which is what we've been doing for the last couple of years.
All in favor of approving the 2026 board meeting calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. And last up, we're going to hear from Becky about the Hoosier Start Program.
You got one? You're good, okay.
No, you're good, I'll let you guys sign the papers, you're fine.
Commotion.
It's not like we gave you guys eight documents to sign. All right. So, we have been reviewing some of the benefits that we offer to staff, and one of the opportunities that we saw as an, as a chance to improve some benefits and offer additional retirement savings to folks was to change our retirement plan in addition to PERF. So PERF is the one that you guys signed to renew, that's the employer contribution. Employees want to contribute money as well to help retire, or help save for retirement, and so we currently offer a mechanism to do that, but there's some barriers to entry. There's not great participation, there's not a lot of education that we're able to do with that plan. And Hoosier Start is a program that's a statewide program. It's a bigger pool of employers that use that. There's a lot more education. They have a specific person for our region who would come out and educate staff on how to save for retirement, plan for retirement, and what those mechanisms look like. They also are able to have a much lower fee for participating in the retirement plan, and they also offer a couple of different options that would meet folks where they really need to be saving for retirement. So there is a pre-tax and a post-tax option. The annual fee is $54 a year in order to participate in Hoosier Start, and that's paid by the employee in order to be able to use the plan. The employer doesn't pay anything for it, we just would be able to offer it to staff. It is run by Nationwide, so they're the plan administrator, and it's a state program that's been in place for quite a long time. They, we met with them yesterday. They've got over 70,000 participants in the plan. It's over $2 billion total, so it's part of a really large plan. And then they have 60-plus counties out of the 90 counties in Indiana. They have fire departments, they've got public libraries that all participate, and so it's something that a lot of employers are offering, that we thought would make sense to offer for our folks as well. And then they also have the option for part-time folks to be able to save for retirement, which is something we can't offer now, and so that would be a voluntary enrollment for folks if they did want to save for retirement, so. We are just starting the discussion, so we still have some work on our part to do. We are going to ask them, we have already asked for contacts of other public libraries who use it, so we can talk to them and hear a little bit about how it's going, and do a little bit more research, but wanted to start the discussion with you all, see what questions you have, and just kind of go from there.
I have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
So, this is new to me, so I'm trying to figure out and think about the distinctions and the benefit for Hoosier Start. Things I'm hearing are PERF is run by the state, right? So it's public versus Nationwide running Hoosier Start, so we're moving private, right?
So, Hoosier Start is a state program. Nationwide is the organization that manages the plan, but they're both state programs, so they're both in So they're both intended for folks to be able to save for retirement and they're both specific to state and public entities.
Okay. But it, but the Hoosier Start is not overseen by anyone at the state? It's just in coordination with?
They have a con, they have people at the state who are overseeing the plan and Nationwide is the one that is basically administering the plan.
Okay.
So there's oversight and there's a couple of different places where the state is overseeing the, the policy and overseeing the plan.
So I understand that we would pay the enrollment fee with Hoosier Start. How, I, I think it would be really beneficial and I, as we move forward to this, to be able to see some type of table of comparison? Because I hear you and I know that we wouldn't be looking into this if it wasn't advantageous for the employees, but I think being able to see that as far as why, you know, what is our reasoning behind this? What, what makes perf unattainable that Hoosier Start would be able to satisfy that need?
I'm sorry, so it's not to replace perf? So we would continue to have perf? We have a 403B plan right now, that's an additional retirement fund option for folks to put money in. And so Hoosier Start goes in hand-in-hand with perf and would just be another option instead of our current 403B.
What our other option is right now, right? Is that what you're saying? It's replacing that?
Yeah, so we have a 403B option. We only have a few folks who are enrolled in it. The employee pays the, the cost on it, so there's a percentage fee with most retirement accounts that folks pay. The benefit with Hoosier Start is that it's fifty-four dollars as the flat fee to participate for the year, which is significantly less than most other retirement options would cost for the employee. And it's completely voluntary. Folks contribute, the library doesn't contribute anything to that because we max out perf for folks. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. It's helpful.
I'm sorry, I didn't do a very good job explaining that.
No, that's okay. In my head, I was just like, what? Okay, but I may have misheard, okay.
One of the other things that the Hoosier Start program offers that we think would be a benefit, because as Becky said, we only have a few people who are participating in the 403B right now, is that they do a lot of education and consultation with staff members, financial planning for retirement and so on. So whether that results in more people using the supplemental retirement option or not, at least there's the opportunity for people to learn more. So that was attractive for us, yeah.
Could you also say that it would include part-time where perf does not?
Yeah, so our.
Include part-time?
Perf plan, and again, this isn't replacing perf.
Right.
So our perf plan is currently only offered for full-time folks.
Okay.
And so the library contributes all of the amount for the perf plan for full-time folks. Our current other voluntary retirement saving is only available to full-time folks.
Okay.
Just the way that plan is set up and administered and managed. There were some changes with the Secure Act here recently that allowed for part-time folks to be able to save in an employer's retirement fund. And so this would be an opportunity for us to potentially offer that to folks. We, as the plan sponsor, plan administrator on our part, would be able to say if we do or don't want to offer it to part-time folks and we can change that if we start out conservative and then open it up. Don't know that I see a reason not to offer it to part-time folks, but we could definitely talk about that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks for getting started.
Is there any information that you guys would like to see for the next meeting? Do you want me to do like a cost comparison for what it costs employees to have the plans? Anything?
I know you're looking into all of those things.
Yeah.
Right, as you're, as you're comparing the options. Trust you.
If there's anything you guys would like to see specifically, I want to make sure we bring it to the next meeting.
If we can't think of something right now, but.
Yeah, you, you mentioned. That's fine, yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and you had mentioned that they have, you know, traditional and Roth plans, correct?
Yes.
Full, part-time employee, more fund investment options?
I believe it's more fund investment options. I can't say that confidently because I haven't seen the difference between what we currently offer and what they offer.
It has an enrollment fee, but no fees on the fund?
Correct, yeah. So there's a fifty-four dollar enrollment fee to be participating in the plan, but not an administrative fee. But there's no administrat, that covers the administrative fee.
Okay.
Certainly getting a list of referrals specific to public libraries will be important to us because we want to see comparable compensation packages that use Hoosier Start and whether or not that's effective for those employees. And that's probably going to be through public libraries, so that'll be a part of what we want to get from them too. So we'll hopefully have that by January, bring it back and can discuss it further and either vote then or just continue to talk about it.
You had mentioned the current plan doesn't have a lot of participation, the, the second option.
Yeah.
Do we know why? Have, have we reached out to staff to find out why they're not contributing? So we make sure that what we're looking for? Mm-hmm, okay.
Don't know.
Yeah, I can look into it a little bit and share some more details with you guys on.
I mean, if you've had any feedback, I guess, that would be great to know. I just want to make sure, this doesn't sound like it is a negative move in any way, but I also want to make sure we're meeting staff needs if that's an issue now.
Yeah, yeah. And we did start looking into this based on some staff feedback and just questions on education. We've seen a big need for that and perf does a really great job of helping our folks, but they can only help really with the perf plan. And so this is an option for us to also offer education for our folks as well, which I think is really important and really valuable, no matter what stage folks are in. I do know also that the Roth is one that we've had folks ask about and we don't have a mechanism right now to be able to do a Roth contribution through payroll. And so this would give us the ability to do that.
Sounds big.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really big. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Next up, we're going to have a department update from CATS with Martin O'Neill.
Hello. There we go. It's good to see everybody. Happy December. I'll try not to take up too much of your time because I know it's going to get really cold and everybody wants to go home. But I'm just going to start by thanking folks, Josh, Greer, and all the people who work at CATS for another year where we are doing more than we ever did. So great thanks to everybody and thanks for Greer and Josh's guidance through the whole year. It's great. Also like to thank Mike Adams, who came on with us this year. From a videographer editor, he moved up into our equipment expert and as such, he's led to a better inventory of equipment and an increase in our digitization projects. And the ADA compliance for our CATS website is well underway. So some highlights, what we want to replace, want to do here, replace old equipment throughout the CATS network. We actually did some of that this year, as well as some equipment we have at City Hall, Ellisville and Monroe County. We continued partnership with WAHB and our weekly government roundup program called CATS Week. An increased digitization of our community collection. Some numbers for this year, this is for the government meetings, the comparison between 2022 and 25. We don't have December of this year in yet, just because we're not that far into the, into the year, so we, you know, and it will be a low year because, you know, Christmas, Thanksgiving, or sorry, Christmas in there. But you can see it's, the years have been comparable, there's always a little increase than next year. Hasn't been as dramatic this year, but you see March in there. There's, we reached seventy government meetings, which is a record that we have never hit before. And a lot of that was down to some rules at the State House or the state brought in where we needed to, or municipalities needed to have more of their meetings recorded and have them archived for at least thirty days. And the city of Bloomington and town of Ellisville has asked us to help them out with that. So that's where that sort of bump came there. Our community events, yeah, more, more this year than the last year. Some months went up and down. The biggest increase was in September and that was due to the Lotus Festival. We actually covered more concerts this year, so there's an increase there in that. And combining them both together, you can see for, over the year, how we, how we did. And again, slight increase and then of a comparison side-by-side between '24 and ' '25, it's about a five percent increase that, in all our programming for 2025. And this is just a list of the meetings and stuff that we, obviously you're not going to read all this, I'm not going to read it to you, but this is just the meetings and programs that we did this year. And you can see, just to get a sense, it's really quite a lot of stuff. Our storage, the last time we upgraded our storage, everything we do now is digital, digital, it all comes off servers and plays back on it from a server and all that stuff. We last upgraded that server seven years ago and with the assistance of, of MCPL staff, we have determined a course of upgrading the server environment, which is mainly storage, storage capacity. One small thing is right now, we have our storage and then we have our backup storage, which is great, it's all mirrored and everything is exactly the same. The problem is they're in the same room, which doesn't really help if we have a fire or flood or something like that. So the plan would be to take the backup storage and put it in our Southwest branch. So there's a nice separation between the two of us. And FYI, we also have, we also use Amazon Web Services for our deep, deep storage. So we keep things backed up in three different places all the time. Due to Mike's help here too, enhanced the workstations using legacy equipment to continue to digitize our old legacy tapes. So this year, we've managed to do over two hundred and fifty programs. But the problems that we're running into, and this is leading to the packet that I left for you earlier, the MEMNON packet. We've realized that, you know, converting two hundred and fifty programs a year is really nice, but considering just for our government stuff, we have about eight thousand tapes, that's going to take us a long time. The other problem is that the equipment that we use to do that, our old legacy gear is breaking and it's hard to keep it going and they don't make them anymore. You can't get parts anymore. So that led us to think about having to look at other alternatives for getting this, for getting, getting this done. And as we started looking around and we were looking at companies across the country really, we came to discover that one of the foremost companies in the world actually have an office here in Bloomington. So this is a company, company called MEMNON and if you wanted to read through that packet, it gives a history of the company and everything else. I believe they started out in Belgium, but then were acquired by Sony and then were sold yet again, but they did all the archiving for IU when they had their huge push to get all their analog programming tapes, audio, video converted. MEMNON kind of parked themselves at IU for about five years to do all that, all that conversion. But then when that was over, they decided to just to open an office here in Bloomington, which could work out great for us. Part of the great thing on that is that we don't have to ship any tapes. We just stick them in the back of the truck and bring them over, which cuts down on costs and also safety of that. What is a valuable historical resource that we have and I think there are very few communities in the country that have the kind of archive that we have there. So that's, we are looking into doing this. They, they give us the proposal. It's of course not cheap. For the government stuff, it would be around about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. But breaking that out per average per tape is about thirty-eight dollars per tape. That is comparable, if not cheaper than any other service that we used before with some other legacy stuff that we had, that we had converted. So we feel good about them. They're here in time, we met with them, they feel, it feels good. They have given us a contract, but we'd, of course, we'd have, you know, Tom looked that over and everything else. And again, this is just something that we're looking into, but our, we know that we are contractually obligated to keep the government stuff archived and make it available for folks online. So that's one thing. And then the tapes are degrade, are degrading and every year that we're there, there, that degradation just keeps accelerating and we'd hit to get to the stage where, you know, we have dust shitting on the shelves and not, you know, do that. So that's what we're, that's what we're doing now. These are just some clips of what we've done through the, through the year, so, that's in there. But any questions? I know that was a lot just to throw right there, but. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Do we have any members of the public for public comment? Nope. Okay. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.